Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for Tuesday, November 21, 2017. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you please call a roll?
Councilmember Grischowiak.
Here.
Councilmember Kicker.
Here.
Councilmember Demmer.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Wells.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here. Thank you. First item on our agenda is to adopt this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Demmer, second by Kicker. Any corrections or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And that motion carries and the agenda is adopted. First item on our agenda is a presentation by Chris Geisler, the Citizen Alternate to the Transportation Advisory Board, TAB. It's all yours, Chris.
All right. I'll pause for the time. I'm just here to provide an advisory update of what TAB does, a little bit of items that have come up last week's meeting. We have a monthly meeting every, the third Wednesday of every month. I am a citizen of Coon Rapids, have been for most of my life, and wanted to continue to serve the community and wanted to provide an update of what's going on. The Transportation Advisory Board is an advisory board that was created under state and federal law to administer the MPO, which is the Metropolitan Planning Area, of which there are three key elements of focus that TAB focuses on. They review and comment on the Thrive MSP 2040 Plan and the Transportation Policy Plan for the region. They review and comment on the regional transportation policy presented by MINDOT, the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, MPCA, and the Metropolitan Airport Commission, MAC. And thirdly, they solicit and evaluate applications for federal transportation funding that comes to the region, as well as conduct public hearings and adoption of the region transportation improvement plan. I will go into that in a little bit more detail further on here. First, it's just basic membership of how TAB is structured. It's a fairly large body with 34 members consisting of elected officials, of which there are 17, one from each county of the county commissioners, and then 10 city members made up of mayors and city council members as well. There are eight citizen members who are appointed, five agency members who come from the various agencies like MAC and MINDOT, and then four transportation motor representatives, i.e. freight or transit and those elements. Additionally, many of these positions have alternates, like myself. I am an alternate for a citizen member for District E here. Currently, there are 53 named primary and alternates at this time, with more alternates and more primaries to be cycled in in January this coming. The alternate process was a new process that they implemented this last cycle, starting in January. These citizen members serve two-year terms and appointments are made from there. So it is a large number of people who are involved and look at this from an oversight for the seven county area. As far as members who represent Coon Rapids, either directly or very nearly, direct representatives would be Commissioner Matt Look is the primary member who sits representing in Anoka County with Scott Schulte as his alternate when he's unavailable. And then my primary seat is Member Sam Valella, who is a resident of Blaine, so right nearby. And then I serve as his alternate when he is not available. And then also, I wanted to provide some nearby representatives. Dick Swanson, who is a city council member of Blaine, also sits on the TAB as a primary. And then Jeffrey Lundie, as a city council member of Brooklyn Parks, representing those individuals who are kind of represent north, the north metro, and bring that voice to the table, if you will. Back to bullet three, the transportation improvement plan. This is really the meat and potatoes of what TAB spends its time on, the regional solicitation. The regional solicitation happens on a biannual basis. Last one was 2016. The next one goes out in 2018 here. And it is how the regional bodies and agencies, including cities, counties, mainly counties, apply, but many cities and agencies like Metro Transit apply, for federal transportation funds. These funds are available under the Surface Transportation Block Grant Program and the Congestion Mitigation Air Quality Program, and any other federal programs that are generated under the legislature that happen. There was some special funding for bridges that came in, special funding for any pollution controls that the federal legislature decides to allocate out to be then spread across the areas. Overall, TAB spreads $200 million over two years. Approximately, it ends up being about $50 million for the first year and $150 million for the second year. There's no hard and fast rule. It just happens to be when the projects are going live and when they take effect, but it's for a two-year period. That money is split across various funding categories to make sure that multiple types of projects are funded. With that, roadways is the primary category, seeing 48% to 60% of the funds, or about $96 to $136 million allocated. Transit receives 22% to 32%, or $44 to $64 million. And then bike and pedestrians, pedestrian projects receive 10% to 20%, or about $20 to $40 million over a given solicitation. Little bit on the 2016 results. There are a handful of projects that were funded up in the north metro and right nearby here in Coon Rapids from the 2016 solicitation. Overall, Anoka County, that's how we tend to aggregate the projects. There were 15 projects submitted, and they received about 8.1% of the total funds allocated for the 2016 solicitation. Little breakdown of these projects. Roadways, the city of Anoka is looking to do an underpass of Fair Oak Avenue and Highway 10. They received $7 million in funding for that underpass. And then the Foley Boulevard overpass at the railroad intersection in Coon Rapids is looking at, received $7 million. And then Hanson Boulevard Reconstruction in Coon Rapids received $2.32 million from this funding process. There was one joint project between Anoka County and Hennepin County to fund some transit that was not selected based on its score from the regional solicitation. And then three bike and pedestrian projects were also submitted but not funded from the regional solicitation in 2016. Why I wanted to be here tonight is that the regional solicitation is currently open for public comment from both cities and agencies, which would allow them to give input on the, how we're adjusting the scoring and how the scoring guidance is being provided to those who would be submitting, or to the applicants submitting projects. This is the opportunity for cities and counties to get a little more insight, request a little clarity, and even suggest alterations to the scoring that's been presented. They meet, comments may be submitted through December 8. It's not a very long timeline, I know, but it is a chance to get in. I do have some contact information provided there, either through email, a recorded voice message, or you may mail it in. And I also have an additional link there on the regional solicitation overview, which provides much, much more information in detail, if you so choose. Moving past the regional solicitation, I'd like to also address one other major topic that came up last week is the MINDOT Quarters of Commerce, which is set aside to fund about approximately $400 million in a four-year prospect, of which, that this is also going out for public comment. It will be evaluated across seven key factors: return on investment, economic impact, freight efficiency, safety improvements, regional connectors, policy objectives, and community consensus. Projects will be scored against these various metrics. And then an eighth factor of regional balance will be applied, which will split the funds between 80%, or 50% in the metro area, which is the eight-county region surrounding Minneapolis and St. Paul, and 50% will go to greater Minnesota. So we would be eligible for the 50% to the metro area. Project recommendations will go in in January through February. However, the current scoring and approach for how the MINDOT will be scoring these projects is also open for public comment. Public comment can be sent to Patrick Weedman, who's the Director of Capital Planning and Programming at MINDOT there. His contact information is available. They also have additional information on the Quarters of Commerce site. At the time I put this together, they had not had approval from the governor's office to post the current process out on their website, but he is more than happy to share that information. They're waiting for that before they can publish it fully on MINDOT's site. This is, Quarters of Commerce is a continuing project from a previous years. I've also created, provided a link there for the presentation that MINDOT brought to TAB as well. All of MINDOT, or all of TAB's meetings and agendas are open and available for, with information items per public open meeting process. And then one more chunk of money that's up for grabs right now is the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency is set to receive $47 million from the Volkswagen diesel emissions settlement that came through. This $47 million may be used to replace any aging diesel equipment, so it doesn't have to be road vehicles, but anything that runs on diesel that doesn't meet the Tier IV emissions standard. Additionally, up to 15% of the funds out may be allocated to electric vehicle charging stations or infrastructure. MPCA is currently seeking public input on where those funds should go. They have a nifty little survey that anyone can take. It doesn't have to be an agency member. Any citizen can go out and vote their voice of where they would like that funds to be allocated. You may also email them directly through vwsettlement.pca@stateamend.us for any unstructured commentary that may not fit within that survey structure. And then some additional information, they have a great website up there with, under Volkswagen Settlement. MPCA Volkswagen Settlement will give you a lot of information and background on where the settlement came from, as well as what they're planning to do with it. And I know that was a buzz round of a lot of information distilled down, but at this point, I would stand for any questions.
Chris, you mentioned there were three applications for bike and pedestrian, either trails or something or another, and none of the three were funded.
Correct.
Do you know why? Were they not regional enough in scope? Do you have any insight on why those weren't funded?
The process, they score in a descending order of projects based on multiple sub-metrics that are detailed within the scoring application. As far as the projects in Anoka County of why they weren't, they didn't reach the line of funding. For additional detailed information on how those projects scored, we can provide that information. And that was provided back to the scorers, or submitters who requested the projects.
I was just curious. I mean, it seemed like if they're trying to fund those and there was only three submitted, for them to not fund any of the three, I was just curious why they...
I should apologize. There are three funded from Anoka County. There were 39 total projects that were submitted into transportation under the bike and pedestrian category.
Oh, that was for our area.
My apologies.
I probably misunderstood. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Geisler here?
Mayor. Councilmember Grischowiak.
A follow-up to that, and I think you might have alluded to it. The reason we weren't, or Anoka County didn't get funded for some of those things, had to do probably with the scoring and the way the scoring is done. So I would be interested in, if you could send me this presentation, if that comment period is open on how that scoring is done, I'd love to know how that scoring is taking place. Maybe we can have some influence on it and get one of those projects in our town.
Mr. Demmer, could you send that out to the council?
Mayor, council, we do have a copy of this. We can get it up to you.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions?
And maybe not for Chris, but for staff, do we have plans or have we been looking at, you know, are we going to be looking at anything to put a proposal in to go after 2018 funds, or do we rely only on partnering with the county? You know, because I'm not sure if I've seen city requests coming in, and are there things that maybe we can look at going, why do we rely on county? Can we look at a city project for a bike or a trail? Or a city request if we have any diesel vehicles? Are we moving forward on anything there?
Councilmember Geisler, we have been looking into the electric vehicles, and that's been something we've been talking to Canexus and others about, charging stations, if those come about. The diesel vehicle component of that was new to me, so I'll certainly look into that. When it comes to the larger transportation or pedestrian, it's always nice to have a group you're submitting with, so that it's on a regional trail system potentially. Maybe it connects to the dam and gets over into Hennepin County. So you try to look at, I guess, the larger scope projects with multiple partners at the table. Those would tend to score better than, say, the city of Coon Rapids saying, I want to put this trail linkage in.
Any others? Mr. Geisler, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item on our agenda is the minutes of November 8, 2017. Second. Motion by Wells, second by Grischowiak to approve the minutes from the city council meeting, November 8, 2017. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Abstained.
That motion carries. One abstention, Councilmember Johnson. We have three items on our consent agenda this evening. And the first one is to adopt Resolution 17-125, a resolution establishing polling locations for the 2018 election. And the changes we're looking at making are for precincts 4-1 and 4-2. These two precincts, staff recommends moving polling back to the Coon Rapids American Legion Building, located at 11640 Churchill Lake Boulevard. The American Legion has sold the building to North Star Community Church, and the church has graciously agreed to allow the city to hold elections for precincts 4-1 and 4-2 in their building. So we would be looking at adopting Resolution 17-125, a resolution establishing polling locations for the 2018 election. Stability there would be nice. Those guys have moved from the Zion Lutheran to the ICE Center to the, you know, yeah, that'd be nice. Next item, there we go, is to adopt Resolution 17-123, amending the fire budget for a washing machine. A $9,000 washing machine. Staff is recommending the purchase of a washing machine for the fire department. The cost to replace it will be $9,000, because capital outlay purchases must specifically be identified and funded per city code 2-803. Staff is recommending the budget for the fire department be amended to purchase the replacement. So we'll need a vote of at least four members of the council to amend the budget. Funds are available in the supply item in the fire department, so our consent agenda will need at least four votes, and you're saying...
I think Ryan Diesel can get some more.
So we're going to be looking at authorization of Resolution 17-123, amending the 2017 general fund fire department budget for the purchase of a replacement turnout gear washing machine. Chief, and I know this is the consent agenda, and we should be breezing through here, but I was kind of digging in a little on this, and this is a pretty big deal for the health of our firefighters, to be able to wash this turnout gear after every event, right? Is that the scoop? Am I getting that correct?
Yes, Mayor, council members, many years ago was a badge of honor, courage, to have firefighters with soot all over their body and all over their gear. We know today that it dramatically increases the risk of cancer for firefighters. So yes, it is, when we go into a fire, the first thing we want to do when we get back is take off all of the turnout gear and get it washed in these commercial washers. And as a point of information, I believe this was installed in the mid-'90s, so I think we got about 20 years of service out of it. So I think it served us well.
Okay. Thank you. And the third item, the fifth item on tonight's agenda, the third on the consent agenda, is item 17-124, amending the 2017 budget for a replacement furnace at Fire Station 2. The furnace at Fire Station 2 failed and needed emergency replacement. It was replaced at an estimated cost of approximately $3,000. It is one of two furnaces that served in the station, because the city charter requires capital outlay purchases to be specifically identified and funded in the budget. Council approval is requested to amend the budget and authorize this purchase. Funds are available in the Facility Construction Fund balance, so they're looking at authorizing RS 17-124, amending the 2017 Facility Construction Fund budget for the purchase of a furnace for Fire Station Number 2. That's like the first thing I've ever seen, that's like in line of what you would expect for pricing. $3,000 for a furnace? Oh, okay.
Totally non-objection case.
So come back. So that was the consent agenda. Councilmember Wells.
Second.
Motion by Wells, second by Demmer. Any discussion or questions?
Mayor. May I just ask, that's a good question, or a good point on that furnace for $3,000. I was just wondering if it was replaced already. How is it just estimated that we have a cost of $3,000? Why isn't our resolution have the cost of the unit?
Oh, the actual cost.
The actual cost.
Mayor and council, because we had McDowell, who was our vendor that repairs all our HVAC in this building, do it. And they did it, it was an emergency, so they had to do it right away. And we got the costs from them. They hadn't tabulated them all as of the council meeting night, but it was, we thought it was going to be close, like $2,995, something like that. So if it's not to the penny, I'd say estimated, but yeah, that's why.
Okay.
So it's right around $3,000. There is a second furnace.
If it goes over, we'll pass it.
Sorry.
And then the only other question, if I had a follow-up, is on the washing machine. Do we have one of those at every fire station?
Council, yes, we do.
Okay. Those were the only two things I had questions on.
And were they all about the same age? Now that we know we get about 20 years out of one.
Mayor, council, I believe they were all put in about the same time. And on the furnace issue, just for what it's worth, as you see, there was two furnaces in there, and one has been replaced, so you might hear from us again in the not-so-distant future. We'll see what happens.
Sure. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the consent agenda? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Forgot my words there for just a moment. All right. No public hearings, no bid openings, no old business. Item six, consider adoption of ordinance 2200 Springbrook Drainage District dissolution. This was the special taxing district established in 1986 and was used to generate taxes to partially fund drainage improvements for city project 94-23. There is no longer a need for this special taxing district, and it can be dissolved. The public hearing was held on October 21, and ordinance can now be adapted. And it appears that the staff has worked with Mr. Roser, he was the only one that appeared at a public hearing, and regarding his concerns, and he is agreeable with the dissolution of the district, so we've got that all worked out. I didn't hear any, I didn't hear from him, so. So we're looking at...
Ms. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
Let me make a motion to adopt ordinance 2200 dissolving the Springbrook Drainage District and authorize publication of summary ordinance.
Second. Motion by Geisler, second by Kicker. Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And that motion carries. Next item on our agenda is item seven, consider Resolution 17-121 authorizing sale of tax forfeited property. Mr. Freilias or Mr. Brown, you want to cover this?
Yeah, I can provide a little update. At least once a year or so, the county approaches us with a batch of tax forfeited properties. Usually, you know, in most cases, they're properties that are some sort of remnant that can be conveyed to an adjacent property owner, or if it's a buildable lot, they can be sold at auction. So the state law does require the council to adopt a resolution authorizing the county to dispose of those tax forfeited properties. This particular batch has several that are kind of run-of-the-mill. There is one, though, at 9920 Olive Street, that has a single-family house on it. It's been kind of a problem property for us. I know there's been a lot of code enforcement activity there over the years. We believe, based on our knowledge of the condition of that house, that it might be a good candidate for the scattered site program to tear down. So state law does allow us to request that the county withhold the property from sale for up to six months. So in this resolution, we're asking you to adopt, we are requesting just that. So that gives us a little bit of time to negotiate with the county, and hopefully we can negotiate a purchase of it. We are able to acquire tax forfeited property at no cost of its use for a purely public purpose, for parkland or roadway, something like that. If it's related to development, we are still able to acquire it to remediate blight, but depending on kind of the condition, there may be some costs associated with that. So depending on what we negotiate with the county, we'll likely come back to you with some sort of purchase agreement at a later date.
So the second property on here, the ending, 0034 PID, is that just a sliver of land on the back of those lots? Okay, because I thought, I don't even see this marked up, and then I saw that blue line, and I went, I'll bet that's it.
Yeah, it is a very narrow sliver that goes behind several lots along Highway 10. I don't know how that came to be. I suspect there were simply, there was simply a gap or overlap in legal descriptions years ago when that area was platted and...
It's all behind, it's all behind the sound wall. I can't believe it would matter to anyone.
Yeah.
I don't imagine that we would want to pay anything for it either.
No. Uh, Councilmember Demmer?
I was going to just ask about that one. So you, you know, it says you can combine it with the adjacent property, so we're going to go one by one to all those houses and ask if they want to combine it. What happens if someone says no?
You know, it's possible, this is something we typically just let the county deal with. You know, the best solution would be to split it and simply offer it to the people who want it. If, I guess, if someone said no, it would just stay under the ownership of the state indefinitely.
And do you know, is any of it, my guess is people will take it if it's already something they mow anyway.
And it doesn't affect their tax value.
Right. If any of it's on the wrong side of a wall, then they're not going to want to maintain it. So then what happens?
You mean like a fence? Wrong side of a fence or something?
Fence, yeah. Because there is, I can see one fence in there, and I can't quite tell which side it's on, because I'm sure we don't have the resolution, but if it's on the wrong side, then are people going to have to, how would it get mowed, I guess, is the, or we just go in there and put a bunch of rocks in?
Yeah. Yeah, that's, it's definitely a difficult situation if someone has a fence on the other side of it. They would, if they, if they acquired it, they would be responsible for maintaining it.
Yeah. Okay. I guess that'd just be my one worry, because there'd be no access to it, because everything else would be owned, and then there'd be this one little orphan plot that would have...
We'd let them plant it in native grass.
Crazy weeds growing on it, and no one would want to own it. So, you know, and it's behind a sound wall, so maybe no one had ever noticed, but I just wanted to make sure we had a way to maintain it if there was no access to it.
Yeah. It's not even the width of a mower.
Right. Roundabout. Yeah.
All right. Council, any other questions, or somebody looking to make an argument, or a...
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion? That's what I meant.
I would move that council adopt Resolution 17-121 authorizing the disposal and conveyance of tax forfeited property.
Second. Motion by Demmer, second by Kicker, and that adopts as presented where we segregate out that 9920 then.
That's right.
Okay. So a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Grischowiak.
On the property at 9920, if we move with this resolution, what's our window to work with the county?
It's six months.
Oh, six months, okay. I thought you said 60 days. I thought that was kind of short. And then we're going to get a proposal from them as to what they would market that to us with? Back taxes or marketable value?
Well, that's right. There is, once we submit this resolution to them, there's an application, I believe, that we have to complete, and then we're able to negotiate with them. I know there are some fairly significant special assessments on that property related to past code enforcement activities, so that we believe will factor into the sale price.
I see. Because that's money owed us, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And that motion carries. Item eight this evening is to consider, planning case 17-13, consider Resolution 17-119 approving final plat for Riverdale Station Apartments Sherman Associates. Mr. Harlecker, Mr. Freilias, do you want me to just read your discussion point?
I've got a little...
Well, I'd hate to...
Refresh everybody's mind.
Yeah, I'd hate to, you know, miss out on a document. Yeah, I'd hate to, you know, miss out on a dog and pony show here.
Mayor and council members, this is a final plat for Riverdale Station Apartments. It's highlighted here, all in the black, and this is the Target Shopping Center just to the north, and this is the North Star Commuter Rail Station right here. And this is a preliminary plat. If you recall, this project involved two apartment buildings and a small retail space, retail lot, and what this, excuse me, plat does, it creates the lots for the two apartment buildings, the commercial space, then leaves this area to the north as an outlot for future development or the second phase of this development, which is proposed to be a senior, two senior apartment buildings. Lot is fifteen point two acres. Lot one is three point three acres, excuse me, lot two is five point one acres, and the small commercial parcel is about half an acre. If you'll see, the final plat is consistent with the preliminary plat that was previously approved. Staff is recommending two conditions along with this final plat. The first one is all engineering comments be addressed, and the second is that park dedication for the plat must be paid prior to the issuance of building permits, the amount of thirteen hundred dollars per unit for the apartments, and five thousand dollars per acre for the commercial site unless otherwise determined by council. With that, I'll answer, answer any questions.
Council, any questions? Somebody chopping at the bit for making an ocean?
Your Honor?
Councilmember Johnson?
I would move in Planning Case seventeen dash thirteen, approval of that Resolution seventeen dash one-one-nine, approving the final plat for Riverdale Station Apartments with the two stated conditions.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Geisler. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. You must have done a good job, Mr. Harlecker. Here onto item nine, consider Resolution seventeen dash one twenty-two, budget amendment and proposal for sanitary sewer improvements, project seventeen dash twenty-eight. Mr. Hammer.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this was talked briefly in work session. The Metropolitan Council is doing lift station repairs and improvements down off of Coon Rapids Boulevard and Coon Rapids Boulevard Extension, and it was discovered that we have some deficient pipes in that location, so I'm seeking a council amendment to prepare some plans and specifications to bring those up to snuff and prepare us better for the future. So with that, I will stand for any questions.
Significant, significant pipes, big pipes.
Takes everything south of the railroad tracks in the city of Coon Rapids into that location, so it's substantial, yes. Very important to us.
Ms. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I'll make a motion to authorize Resolution seventeen dash one twenty-two, amending the two thousand seventeen sewer fund budget and authorize the execution of the letter of engagement with SEH in accordance to the proposal dated November tenth.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Demmer. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Guskowiak?
Nice job with the presentation earlier on this, on this need here. My question is on the execution of the letter engagement with SEH. They have these three tasks. One of the tasks is that they would undertake would be bidding and construction, and my question is, does that take away our competitive bidding that the city would do, or would they prepare the bids and then you would look at them?
No, Councilmember Guskowiak, that is to get, that's a task that would be after construction starts. So task one and two is to prepare the plans, get it out through the bidding process. If we award a contract and we need their assistance on the ground for inspections and other things, that's what that task is. It's difficult for them to put a number on it until they know who the contractor is and the schedule and things of that nature, but I wanted us to understand the total scope we'd be looking at. So those may be dollars that are never spent if we have the resources available to do that.
Okay. Seeing how this moves all of the sewer of the city south of the tracks. Does anybody want to stand in the way of this project? No, seeing no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. We are on to item ten. Wow, there it is. Consider Resolution seventeen dash one twenty, authorizing cottages of Coon Creek Limited Partnership Housing Revenue Note. Ms. Legg, do you want me to read your discussion, or do you want to just kind of hit the highlights on this?
Mayor and council, maybe I can just kind of hit the highlights quickly. So for the cottages of Coon Creek, they have applied for allocation and bonding, so they will receive an allocation of three million dollars, and this is to sell and rehab their project. So tonight, what we need to do is hold a public hearing. Any bonds that will be issued on this are not responsibility of the city, they're in the city's name, but they're not city debt. So as far as getting into the details of the project, maybe Grant can talk about that a little bit more if we would like to do that, but essentially, we're authorizing the financing for the project.
Mr. Mayor and council, if there are questions about that, as Ms. Legg pointed out, this is a purchase and rehab project, and in terms of the rehab, the report that we had earlier is that roofs would be replaced, central air conditioning, water heaters, kitchen appliances, carpet cabinets, so a lot of interior remodeling and some exterior work would have to be done as well. Whether they can do all of that under this latest allocation of funds, which is less than what they had originally proposed, I haven't seen the most current list, but this is what they had described earlier, so.
Mr. Fernealius, you said purchase and rehab, and our, and our discussion points here says acquire and rehab, but it sounds like it's still the same group.
They would, they would sell it to a different investor, so there would be an actual transfer of property, there'd be a new equity investor, but it's the same general partner that would be involved in managing the building. So the current ownership or management team would still be involved in this project.
And at one time, at one workshop, they brought in Mary T. with them as the ones that were going to be managing it, but no, I haven't seen anything involving Mary T. For, since that evening, are they still involved in this, do we know?
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if they are or not. That would be for the actual management of the, you know, of the complex itself.
Right, I understand. Okay. We had so many conversations that went fifty-five and over, then not fifty-five and everything, so it was just, it all sort of blends together, and I think it's all ties together. All right, any other questions before we open the public hearing? It's going to be a long one. All right, well, we're going to open the public hearing. You are here this evening to address council, as we, considering the cottages of Coon Creek Limited Partnership Housing Revenue Note, now is your chance to speak up. And with that, we'll close the public hearing.
Everyone here spoke.
Everyone here spoke, yeah.
The record shall reflect, there is no one in the audience.
Counsel, what are your wishes?
Your Honor?
Councilmember Demmer?
Move to adopt Resolution seventeen dash one-two-zero, which authorizes the issuance, sale, and delivery of a multi-family rental housing note and authorizes loaning the proceeds of the note to Coon Creek Senior Community Limited Partnership.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Geisler. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Probably don't have anybody here for open mic either, then. There you go. But we do have a, an open mic report from the last meeting, and that was on the Lions Park concept. Mr. and Mrs. Crane, sixteen ninety-four hundred nineteenth Avenue, addressed the city council with concerns over the concept plan for Lions Coon Creek Park and the issues presented, including funding considerations and the location of a proposed parking lot adjacent to their property. It was further noted that there may be an issue with the survey and/or link that was utilized on the city website to solicit feedback on the proposed concept. So they did receive a response from staff, and basically, the Lions Coon Creek Park is being reconstructed as part of the park bond referendum that was approved in two thousand thirteen, and thus, the majority of the park improvement costs will be funded by the referendum. There may be, however, some potential ancillary utility work within or immediately adjacent to the park that might be funded from corresponding enterprise funds. A recent accounting of the referendum projects has all improvements proposed within the referendum being completed. Following the two thousand eighteen park improvements, which will be Crooked Lake and Riverwind, Lions Park is the only outstanding park improvement remaining. There will also be approximately two million dollars remaining for identified trail improvements as well. The proposed concept for the park was just that, a concept. The Parks and Recreation Commission is the only group that has provided comments on the original concept, which resulted in what was shown at the public open house on October ninth and included in the survey on the website. Staff is currently going through the comments received from the public and will be modifying the concept for city council consideration in the next few months. Upon approval by the city council, the project will move into design phase with bidding anticipated to occur next winter and construction to commence in the spring of two thousand nineteen. Mr. Crane stated that no comments were being received from the survey because of potential technical issues with the link, but the survey tallied seventy-two online responses. We've got a list here. This concern is currently being investigated to determine if there are issues with the host source, which is Survey Monkey, and/or integration with the city website, and corrections will be made within future surveys if necessary, and this item is for informational purposes That is everything. We're on to other business. Council, any other for other business? Councilmember Demmer?
To the last comments, if you feel like you had comments and you're worried that they didn't get recorded, first off, the ones that were recorded is on, on this, this page here, but you'd have to know how to get there, which is, which is on the agenda.
City council agenda.
City council agenda on the website, but if you're worried that your comment was not included, you should contact the city staff and just let them know your comments. It looks like the website surveyed correctly, but you just, you never know if you missed some, so, if that's a concern.
Okay, excellent. Mr. Hammer, the lights on Main Street that are in look wonderful.
Great, I haven't been up there yet since it's been dark.
Yeah, the only connection left is from like Wells Fargo going east over to Ten, but all the rest of them are in on the north side, down, and coming back on the south side, and they look great. I drove through Friday night, so it was really, it was the old lights on one side, the new lights on the other, and it couldn't have been darker. I mean, it was like hundred percent humidity and no, and I went, oh, this is, this is good, yeah.
So just a quick update, by the end of the day tomorrow, all lights within that segment will be done on Main Street, with the exception of those on the bridge. We're going to hold off on those until a little bit later. All the underground work on Coon Rapids Boulevard will be complete by early next week, and all those will be in by December ninth.
Excellent. That'll be a big improvement. All right. Youth hockey night is going to come up before our next council meeting. I think it's Friday night, December first.
Correct.
And it's a Blue Lox home game, and if young hockey players wear their jersey, they get it for free that night.
That's correct.
So, and those guys are on a roll, I mean, they're like thirteen and one and one or something. What about old hockey?
If you still fit your youth hockey jersey tight. Be tight. One of us is bear night, most of you.
Mr. Stedman?
Mayor and council, I'll just make mention for public good that city offices are closed, obviously Thursday for Thanksgiving, but then the Friday following as well reopen on Monday.
Okay. And that would be the last item on my little short list, would be to wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Anything else?
Mayor, just one thing that came up across my desk, a colleague of mine noticed it, that there was a member of our police force that was very generous over the last couple of weeks on a cold night or whatever, and I know that police officer wants to remain anonymous, but I also, whoever that is, I thought that was a really great thing to do, and I wanted to recognize the job well done there. Chief?
Yeah, yeah, so, and apparently it was, they stopped, somebody was, it was a family with five children, and they were going to be, going to be spending the night in the car, and he apparently, or they, I don't know if it's he or she, anonymous, had paid for them to stay in a motel, so that was very nice, and that bodes well for us as a community, and we really appreciate it.
And I think not only did they do that, but they went out and, you know, tried to find housing for these folks, and then when everything was exhausted, took it upon himself to do that. I just, it's, it's a great story for, yeah.
Excellent. Were you just chopping at the bit to make a motion adjourned, or what?
Your old name?
Well, I'm here till somebody moves to adjourn.
And I just did.
Second. All right, motion adjourned, second to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Adjourned.
Music guy wants you out of here.